Hi Bill, can you not hear us?
If not, we can move on and we'll come back to Bill when he's available then. Okay, so I'm going to run through a presentation of my year as mayor. So I'll stand up for this one and go to the other microphone. So I'm going to run through a presentation of my year as mayor. So I'll stand up for this one and go to the other. Seems to be a little lag on that. Okay. There we go. Quite sure what the top bits are, okay. So I actually asked my colleagues on council to elect me as mayor because I wanted the opportunity to find out more about what makes our wonderful town tick and the opportunity to meet some of the amazing people who make it all work. And I've certainly done that. The role of mayor to me seems to fall into three main elements. First is the only legal requirement in that I chair the meetings of Froome Town Council. And I'm not going to spend too much time talking about that part of the work because I assume that, like me, you probably spend happy hours every evening glued to YouTube watching FTC meetings on catch-up. So the second part of the role is the ceremonial role, attending the annual rhythm of events in Froome. And traditionally, the first mayoral event is, because it falls on the Saturday nearest the Feast of St Alden in late May, is the blessing of St John's well. The kids at St John's always do a lovely job of dressing the well. It is quite an experience for a new mayor, be walking through town with the incense burning, stopping to bless the leit in Cheep Street, and then joining the town band for hymns and prayers at the well. So that's then followed by the Carnival Family Fun Day in Victoria Park with the selection of carnival royalty, the dog show alongside lots of traditional sideshows. The year moves on through Big Green Week with a host of events highlighting the work of so many local groups to mitigate the impact of climate change. And June also brought Refugee Week, when our welcome hub facilitated events including a graffiti art workshop, a migration-themed workshop for schools, stand-up comedy, yoga and storytelling, celebrating the stories and contributions of displaced people. And then for me, July always means hidden gardens, but I do know that there's actually a world-class community arts festival running in parallel. Seriously, Froome Festival is one of the highlights of life here in Froome and brings masses of tourists to town to support our local traders and arts venues. After summer, it's time to celebrate with local people from around the globe, sharing their cultures, including music and dance, language, games, food and drink at the fabulous multicultural Froome. And then, before you know it, nights are drawing in and the formality of Remembrance Day is with us. Thanks to the vagaries of the railways, this year I had to get to Westbury for 6:15am to deliver a memorial wreath to the Paddington Poppy Express, but it was a special moment that will stay with me. And then, before long, we're preparing for Christmas and judging hundreds of entries in the mayor's Christmas card competition. I love the winning design from Frida so much that I sent it to friends and family around the world, so her artwork is now in Germany, Denmark, France, the US and Australia. And then we're on to Light the Night in a moment. And what can I say? You turned out in your thousands. I'm not going to say how many thousands because I know the police were just a little bit sensitive about that one. But I hope you all enjoyed that evening as much as I did. It's worth being mayor just for that one night on the balcony. I was away over Christmas, so thanks to my colleagues on council who stepped in to cover events like the Great Christmas Get Together and to the amazing team at Victoria Park Cafe, who seem to have created a new tradition there with their special Christmas morning gathering. As we move through the new year, we follow Froome's natural flow, first with the Wausail at Waylands. I'd never imagined that being mayor involved making a noise to wake the apple trees and then pouring cider around their roots. And then on to the beautiful Valentine's Lamp Ceremony. This year was the last for Regling, and I was so pleased to be able to present him with a civic award that evening, recognising the work he's done to create this very special Froome tradition. And then, capturing the last of the darker evenings, it's time for Window Wonderland. So many creative people making such an effort to create a magical event that reflects some of what's best in Froome, as does the Kindness Festival in the following month. The team at the Good Heart made that week so special, and it's the mayor's privilege to open the celebrations this year at Rook Lane Chapel for the launch of Froome Grief Network. And so, spring moves onwards. Just recently, I joined over sixty other volunteers for the Great Big Spring Clean, tidying, weeding and cleaning, all powered by coffee from Critchell School's catering van. And then Froome Busks is next, and it's a joy to see the town come alive to the sound of all our aspiring young singers and musicians enjoying performing in public. And then before you know it, it's time to prepare for the annual town meeting. So overlaid on all those regular events is the third part of the mayor's role, celebrating specific milestones and events for some of the nearly two hundred voluntary and not-for-profit organisations that make this town tick. Since becoming mayor, I have been asked to launch the pirate ship, Welsh Mill Woods, named Helen in recognition of the work our own Helen Vine did with the children from St John's School and with some assistance from the Rangers. I got to join the Gay Pride March into the independent market, and I was invited to visit the beautiful space at Withy Wood behind Berkeley Church, where Phaedra and Corrie have created a gardening sanctuary for those with special needs. And I went along to an intergenerational sports day at Rossetti House and took part in the sixth birthday celebrations for the Good Heart. So many things in the year. I've ridden what I call the Saxon Vale Roller Coaster with the town, as our hopes were initially dashed and then unexpectedly revitalised. And I can still remember taking that phone call, saying that Acorn had withdrawn while I was in Victoria Park, celebrating with the green and healthy Froome team. It was my fortune to be mayor for the 50th anniversary of Froome Town Council. Hundreds of you joined us for a celebration in the park. The High Sheriff of Somerset joined that one. Rob Beckley took quite a dashing figure in his formal uniform and bicorne hat. I felt quite upstaged, but then I've kind of got used to that as I work so closely with Martin, our new town crier, who'll upstage anybody. I was able to join the family fun at Wayland's go-karting event and celebrated the fifth anniversary of Focus Froome, as well as the centenary of the Memorial Theatre, when I got to meet the lovely lady Anne Dodd, wife of Ken Dodd, who'd been such great supporters of the Memorial Theatre. As the year draws to a close, I have to thank Anne Taylor for inviting me to present the awards at the Gateway Club. Such a friendly and positive experience, I doubt many mayors have presented an award for the longest paper aeroplane flight. I had the honour of opening the new roundhouse just across the river from the pirate ship, where a team led by Martin Roscoe have replaced the older structure with a new building that I'm sure will be used for many years to come. 2025 has brought a new vicar to St John's, and it was my honour to represent Froome Town Council at the inauguration of the Reverence Seamus Hargrave. Many people have told me how much they enjoyed the sound of those bells ringing again, and well, I hope we'll hear much more of that. Seamus has already started to bring new energy to St John's, celebrating more services and opening the Via Crucis for Lent. Finally, and most recently, it was great to mark the opening of the new banking hub to its temporary home in the library, while just across the bridge, we're now able to enjoy the new mural on the wall of the Westway. So that's my summary of my mayoral year. Thank you very much. How are we doing with Bill Revins? Okay, so let me hand over to councillor Bill Revins, leader of Somerset Council then.
Hello, thanks Andy. Can you hear me all right over in the room?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thanks ever so much for hosting me this evening, and your comments about the Saxon Vale Roller Coaster did make me chuckle. So yeah, I think that's a ride we're all currently enjoying. My apologies, I can't join you in person again. I only found out that this was the forum in which I could update residents in Froome on the current situation this afternoon. And as you might see from my attire, it's the sound of leather on willow has started, and that's where I'd planned to be this evening. So I've just stepped away from cricket training at North Pedderton to join you. So my apologies that I'm not with you in person. And when we met on the 23rd of January in the room that you're in now, I did promise an update on the disposal of the Saxon Vale site to Mayday Saxon Vale, and I'm absolutely still determined that we will get this over the line. I did say if we didn't complete by the 31st of March, I'd provide an update, and that's what I'm doing at the moment. So despite our best endeavours on both sides, we have been unable to meet that original deadline, but I would like to reassure you that the work continues towards the sale. The standard legal procedure has so far taken more time than anticipated, and that is the reason the sale has not progressed as quickly as we have hoped. Our regular engagement with the Mayday team remains pragmatic and productive, and both parties are very keen to complete as soon as possible. And I'm optimistic that we will have a positive outcome that we can report in the near future. So disappointed in a way that we haven't got it over the line yet, but I want to reassure everybody that the work is ongoing and we expect to have some positive news for you in the near future.
That's great to hear, Bill. Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, thank you very much for taking the time to join us this evening. It's much appreciated.
Not a problem. I'm not sure there's much more I can update, but if anyone does have any questions, I'm very happy to take them.
Thank you. My name's Richard Thomas. Could I just ask both the Froome Town Council and the leader of Somerset Council, what have been the benefits to Froome of the establishment of the new unitary Somerset Council? Thank you.
Do you want to take that one first, Bill, or shall I?
Please do, while I cogitate on an answer. That wasn't one I was expecting.
It's always interesting to get a new question like that. I think from our perspective, and colleagues on the council will comment as well, we have been able to develop a good working relationship with Somerset Council, both the elected and the officers are open to some conversations with us. I think we're all struggling to manage the ramifications of the dire financial situation that Somerset Council is in, and is therefore asking us to pick up some of the pieces that it's having to drop, which plays into some of your other questions later, Richard. But I don't know if any other councillors had comments they want to make on that. Mel?
Hi, I'm Melishir, councillor. The departure of the not very much-loved Mendip is an extreme benefit, having fought with them for a decade at least in terms of trying to get more recognition, more services being devolved, and sometimes just even trying to get a decision out of them. It was a very difficult period, and you know, no apologies for saying that, because I've been around quite a lot in local government, and there are some really very difficult councils in this world, and they were one of them.
Thanks. Bill, did you want to come back on that one?
Yeah, it's an interesting one because for me, clearly there are benefits of the unitary system of local government because we can be a lot more joined up in how we think about all of our services. Yeah, for example, housing and social care or planning and highways, which when they're split between district and county, it can be really difficult for those to come. And yeah, people do get confused if you're not part of the system as to which tier deals with them. So there are definite benefits. I don't know whether you may have read the Independent Sit for Reports that the government commissioned into our finances, which did identify particular weaknesses in the reorganisation plan we inherited and in the financial acumen of our predecessors. However, it's been a bumpy ride in giving birth to Somerset Council. We've had to go through major restructures in order to land the staffing that we wanted, and we've seen extraordinary pressures. Let's have every council in the country that delivers social care on our budgets, both for children and adults who are vulnerable and in need. And we set out at the start to be a caring and listening council, and we have prioritised and made sure that we fulfil all our statutory obligations to meet those social care needs. I very much have seen the relationship between Somerset Council and Froome Town Council, and indeed all our city, town and parish councils, as being a partnership, that we work together. I want to think that the members of Froome Town Council and officers can pick up the phone, pop an email to us, and we can have that dialogue and that relationship where, you know, we may not agree on everything, but at least we can work as partners and friends. And I hope that that approach has come over over the last couple of years. I'm really pleased that we've managed to agree a devolution agreement, which I think I made the formal decision on yesterday and should just go through the final governance processes now to pass more services to local control in Froome, to appreciate that cooperation. It's very much the approach that we wanted to take, that we want communities to be in control of their own destiny and have the right solution for local problems resolved by local councils. So it's not been a smooth ride. I've tried to be transparent about that, and I look forward to continuing the positive relationship with Froome Town Council and the residents of Froome and surrounding areas.
Thank you very much, Bill. And to answer your question to some extent, Richard. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Bill. We'll let you get back to your cricket practice then.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much. Take care all.
Bye. So we do now move on to questions and comments from the public and councillors. I have got a couple already tabled, but does anybody in the room have anything they wanted to raise? Yeah, Lenka.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank you, Andy, for all your support over the last year to Fair Froome, to multicultural Froome, and you went out of your way to be involved in other things that weren't mentioned. You know, you've done loads. It's really appreciated. Secondly, I just wanted to raise the issue, probably people have heard in the news yesterday, it's awful April. So people's bills have massively risen, averaged £380 over the year, and obviously universal credit, other benefits are not going to be raised that much. Disability benefits have been cut, so I just wanted to put it out there to the community, you know, that that's going to have an impact on Fair Froome. So we're just, you know, asking for your help going forwards. And finally, but to thank Froome Town Council for all their support.
Thank you very much, Lenka. Thank you. Anita?
Thanks, Andy. Anita Collier, town councillor. I actually raised at the council meeting we had last month about my concerns over the traffic that parks on double yellow lines outside the Pepper Box nursery. I just wanted to, I know we wrote to the police and to Somerset, but I just wanted to record my thanks because within days, the police were there on duty. So thank you very much for Rachel and her team. And I understand this morning there was even a warden there. So great to see that everybody's taking action. Thank you.
That's good. As I mentioned, I've got a few questions here from Richard Thomas. And Richard, if it's okay with you, I'll just read the question and the short form answer, just so that it's on record. And as we've mentioned, once our finance officer is back from her holiday, we'll come back to you with some more detailed answers on these by mail. So the first question was about Froome Town Council tax, which for a band E property rose by 26.4% in 2425 compared to 2324. What were the driving forces for this level of increase? So the driving force was primarily the devolution packages, preparing for the cost of running the assets and services that Somerset Council were planning to transfer to Froome Town Council. And then the Froome Town Council tax this year for band E is rising by a further 6.6%. What's the driving for another above inflation increase? So this increase was related to ongoing increases in our costs and running the council following the devolution. So it's that growth. In terms of budgeted staff costs across the town council were set to rise significantly in 2425, were these increases realised and what were the driving forces behind such increases? So the answer is that yes, increases have been realised. Driving forces included the results of an independent job evaluation project, which increased salaries across the organisation, plus some new posts created in 2324 that incurred full-year costs in 2425. Question four was across the whole town council, what is the budgeted staff cost increase for 2526 over the actual for 2425, and what are the driving forces? The budgeted increase for 2526 is £262,000, which includes three new posts, a facilities manager, an HR assistant and a ranger. If you take away those three new posts, the increase is £142,000, which is a nine per cent increase on the previous year. This covers the increase in employers' national insurance rates and an estimated salary increase across the pay scale of one and a half thousand pounds per annum per full-time equivalent post. Question five was budgeted staff costs for the aim to coordinate town action to mitigate and adapt to climate change in 202526 are £118,999 against a total expenditure of £141,499. What can realistically be achieved with a non-staff budget of only £22,500 was your question? The main push for this work is around providing advice to the community and to run campaigns to help adapt to climate change. This primarily does take time, and hence the concentration of the budget on staff costs. And then finally, question six. The 202526 budget for town hall major work stands at £100,000. What major works are being undertaken? Is this a one-year or multi-year project, and what's the expected completion date? I have to say, to some extent, that's a bit like painting the fourth bridge, looking after this building. But this is a large multi-year project, but with a large upfront in But this is a large, multi-year project, but with a large upfront investment this year. We need to re-point with lime mortar a large part of the building to reduce serious watering grass and also to allow the building to breathe, to reduce damp. And while the scaffolding is up, we will carry out repairs to the guttering and fascias so that we don't incur duplicate scaffolding charges. Once that's done, we plan to carry out a series of retrofit works to make the building more energy efficient and this will come back to council for decision later in the year. As with any older building, there will be an ongoing year-on-year maintenance cost. Hope that at a level addresses your questions, Richard. And as I say, we'll get back some more detailed answers once Sarah's back. Do you want to come back on that first? It will come on in a moment.
For your answers and having a brief discussion with the town clerk before the meeting, I realised there's going to be some more detailed answers forthcoming. So thank you for that. Given that it's a public meeting and my questions are in public, what do you do, what is your plan to make the more detailed answers available to the public as opposed to just to me individually? And I don't really have any questions about the staff costs. I suspected a lot of it was due to devolution and I thank the leader of Somerset Council for his somewhat generic answers to the challenges posed by devolution and the alleged advantages to Frome Council. But the only thing I want to really follow up about is the town hall. So it's a multi-year project. So what are the recurring costs in future financial years, given the upgrade to the town council? Not just its annual maintenance, which happens every year, but the upgrade to the premises. So what are the ongoing costs as opposed to what's the cost in the coming financial year? And if you're retrofitting for energy efficiency, what sort of savings might that deliver in the future? Thank you very much.
I don't think we're in a position to answer that in detail this evening, but what I'd suggest is that we will get a written answer back to you and we'll make that answer an appendix to the minutes to this meeting, which will be on the public portal. Okay? Thank you. Yes, Adam.
Thank you. Adam Boyden, Frome North, Somerset Councillor. Have you mentioned SGC already this evening?
No.
Okay. Last week's planning committee, I was going to say Mendip, sorry Mel. Somerset Council's Planning East Committee, we agreed reluctantly to not oppose the development at inquiry in July and August and to offer a neutral position because the council couldn't find defendable reasons for objections and the financial risks as well. So there'll be a neutral position from Somerset Council, but anyone else has until this Friday to offer any comments to the inspector and some of us are going to do that, I know. I've also heard from Dawn, councillor Denton, that the Pack Saddle site, Liv West have appealed the refusal, which was in January. And there'll probably be an inquiry later this year, I don't know when. Another thing is about Fusion and the Ledger Centre. I've seen a letter today from Anna Sabine MP to Fusion, asking for a meeting, pointing out the results of her survey of users, which had 200 responses, pointing out various issues that need to be addressed. So I'm hoping that that will be, there'll be a meeting with Fusion at some point soon. Don't know if you've had any contact with them directly. And the D2 and D2X bus routes from Frome to Bath are changing on the sixth, so that's Sunday next week. And I've pointed out, others have pointed out, Favbuck and Somerset Bus Partnership as well, that the D2X is going via Norton St Philip rather than heading into the A36. But as an express service, it will now avoid Beckington and Road, but also Critchill and Stonebridge and it goes straight through. Some of the evening services are D2Xs, so out of Frome to Bath. So I and Peter Travis are also asking Somerset Council to ask first to please turn one of those buses at least into a D2 so that it doesn't cut off the residents of Critchill and Stonebridge and the villages as well. I think that's it apart from, a big thank you from me and other Somerset councillors, I guess, to Andy for being mayor over the last year and all the effort you've put in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Mel?
Thanks for your questions because I think we need more of those questions about scrutiny in terms of where we are financially and what we're doing. But this is a really difficult period. There's so many unknowns that's never, I don't think of any time in the past have parish or town council has been involved in so much. So the demise of Mendip, good, but unknown in terms of what that would mean. Somerset are obviously going through real problems in terms of finances and, you know, who knows, they could still go bankrupt in the form that local government does go bankrupt. But that means that lots of services are going to come down to us. And in many respects, that's a really good thing because we, local decisions made locally about local services and financed locally is exactly what most people in this room would want. But what we do need is the kind of questions that you've asked in terms of what we are doing because we're not necessarily the most experienced people in being able to run a bigger council, a much bigger than when I started 15 years ago, whatever it was. You know, we were in a tiny office in Palmer Street, held up by aquas and there were about four or five people there and a group of gardeners who didn't want to work. It was, and since that time, we've really changed dramatically and I suspect will change dramatically again. So we're undertaking a peer review, so that's people from other councils brought here by the Local Government Association in the next few months, to actually look at what we do, what we've done in the past and what we need to do in the future because things are going to change again. And if they don't change, then that's our problem because actually, you know, we need to change fast all the time, same as anybody else who's in this sector. So, thank you.
Yeah, very much agree with that. Yeah, please do.
Can I thank the councillor, Mr Mayor, sorry. Can I thank the councillor for his comments? My only, my big concern, and this is a bigger question than for this meeting, it's a national political consideration, is that the responsibility for services get devolved to a lower, a more local level. I can see advantages of that, I can see some pitfalls in that, but there are undoubtedly advantages. But we still pay for the level of provision that doesn't exist at the higher council level. I've only recently, in the last 18 months, moved back to Somerset, though I grew up in the area. And I'm amazed to see that we've abolished all these councils, which may or may not be the right thing. I don't have a view on that. But surely one of the things was to become more efficient and save money because you'd have fewer tiers of government, fewer councils, fewer officials, fewer this, fewer that. And it just does not seem to exist. If Frome Council is taking on more, fine. I'm hoping to see the Somerset Council tax part come down as a result. I suspect I'll be disappointed.
Yeah, I fear the same, I fear the same. I think Sean, we should move on from this if you don't mind. But I echo, I'll come back to Phil in a moment, but I do echo Mel's comment that we hold our council meetings in public and we really value public participation and public discussion of all the topics that we're discussing.
Thanks, Andy. Just to continue from Adam's point about the buses, the D2 and the D2X. The D2 from the sixth will resume its original route from Sainsbury's through Critchill into the middle of town and then around Stonebridge and Beckington and Road and then carry on through Norton St Philip into Chart House into Bath. The D2X will start at Sainsbury's, but then go straight into town along the bus, down into the marketplace and then out of town. So you're right, it will not go into Critchill or Stonebridge, but at least Critchill and Stonebridge will now be connected by the D2. And on Saturday morning, Peter Travis and I and probably Tracy as well from Favbuck will be on a bus stall in the middle of town handing out new timetables.
Thank you, thanks. I think we have got one other question that came in.
Yep. So this is a question from Stephen Hall and he can't be with us this evening, so he's asked for his lightbulb moment to be read out in consideration.
Well, as I understood, this was probably more, it's almost like a question from the public rather than a lightbulb moment one, so let's take it in section.
Yeah, I would say so. He says, "I would think that all road users familiar with the exit from the Market Yard car park will know how ridiculously dangerous it is entering North Parade. Unless you're driving a forward controlled vehicle, your bonnet will enter the main highway before you have visibility past the house and the foliage to your right. A simple solution, reverse the right of way in Bridge Street so that drivers have to enter at the north eastern junction off North Parade and exit at the lower end by the museum, which has better visibility. That is perfect, but certainly it is better than the current situation. I look forward to receiving feedback in due course."
Thank you very much. I mean, as you all know, that's outside of FTC's remit, but certainly we can raise it with the necessary people at Somerset Highways. Anita, I don't know if you've got anything direct on that.
Only really that this has been raised quite a few times by residents because on the surface of it, it looks like quite a logical solution. The challenge is, I think, for anybody coming out of Justice Lane on the bottom end of that, of North Parade, if there are any big trucks or large vans and they're turning to go up North Parade, they don't have the capacity, they don't have the room to make that turn without bumping into the downward traffic. So I think that's been the major issue and that's one of the reasons why it's not really that practical to consider it.
Let me see that junction by the museum is a very tight corner.
But I do agree. I think, you know, there are issues there with the foliage as you turn right at the top there. It isn't easy to see, but I'm not quite sure if there's anything Somerset can do about that.
We'll raise it up with Somerset and see what the options look like. Thank you all. Okay. So if I move on to item five, we've now got a big idea for Frome from Graham. Do you want to come up? Have we got a clicker for Graham, please? Oh, yeah. Will you press the green button? Red button becomes green.
There we go. Cool. Thank you, everyone. I'm Graham. I'm half of Keford Hedgehog Rescue, which is a micro hedgehog rescue or rescue hedgehogs. They're very small, not hedgehogs. So I'm here to talk to you about hedgehogs. So I'll start with a couple of facts. The first thing is they're nocturnal, so lightbulb moment probably quite inappropriate, but here we are. They evolved about 15 million years ago and haven't actually changed that much. Some people think they might have existed at the same time as dinosaurs, not too sure. They're a really good indicator species and what that means is if you've got a healthy hedgehog population, there's probably lots of other good things in the environment that are going on because they eat bugs and bugs are good in the environment, things like that. They are mammals, so they give birth to live young. But rest assured, babies are born in a little fluid field sac, so mum and baby are all right. The population in the UK is about 800,000. That's massively dropped off. We don't really have really good historical figures, but it's reckoned about 30% in the last decade, which is huge. They're now on the near threatened list of international species. Near threatened to me doesn't sound that bad, but it's really bad, true bad. So what I'm here to talk to you about really is hedgehog friendly Frome. That's my lightbulb moment. Graphic designers may notice a little hedgehog, I was very proud of myself of that. So you may well ask yourself, what is hedgehog friendly Frome? And the honest answer is, I don't really know. That's why I'm here to get some ideas and here's just some ideas I had. Lots of hedgehogs are run over, maybe we could put up signs in the road. We could have hedgehog houses. This one's actually one that I assume the council did in Welshmell. Water, especially now that we get really hot, dry summers, we get lots of hedgehogs coming into the rescue because they're dehydrated. We could encourage people to put out water, we could even have like regular spots that people go to. Average hedgehog roams about 10 to 30 hectares. They can go up to about two kilometres a night or a male looking, being a bit amorous, can go up to three miles a night. But they need space, so we can ensure that there's holes in fences. We could even maybe talk to fencing contractors and see that they offer that as standard. Strimmers, nightmare for hedgehogs. We could get stickers that we put on strimmers that say, please check before you do it. We can have, recently there was the Victoria Park Management Plan. When we have things like that, we could have an explicit section for hedgehogs. I think that's the end. I've got 10 seconds left. That's my email address if people who want more information or anything like that. And because I kind of work in marketing, I didn't leave without advertising a talk that I'm doing on the 4th of May about hedgehogs.
Thank you very much. Just stay there a moment, I think Adam's got a question.
That was lovely talk. My husband, because I can't do it, my husband has probably taken dead hedgehogs, about six in the last year. Does that indicate a growing population, the fact that more are being killed on the road? And the other thing is, I scythe rather than using a strimmer and my understanding is that's so much better for hedgehogs, using a scythe rather than a strimmer.
So on the population question, I can't honestly answer. It could just be that there was a nest nearby a road. In general, over the UK, it's thought that the urban population is sort of stabilising, but they're still massively dropping in rural areas, mainly due to loss of habitat. Yeah, we don't have accurate data for Frome. Hedgehog Street, yeah, Hedgehog Street, run a little thing where you can, if you see a hedgehog, you can tag it and that's enormously helpful for them. There's not much research done in hedgehogs because they're wild animals, there's no money in it. There has been some viruses going around, that could also be what's doing them. Sorry, what was your second question?
Scything versus strimmer.
Scything. I'm not too sure. I suspect it is. I think the main thing is before you cut a rough area, have a good poke around with a stick and bear in mind they're nocturnal, so they'll be asleep and also their defensive action is to curl up. So you sort of have to have a proper look around because they don't just run away like a cat would.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Graham. Thank you. Okay. I think we've now got a video for you to enjoy and it's not just an FTC meeting, it's a compilation celebrating the FTC grant recipients 2425. Are we ready to run with that? Yay. There we go, that was a bit of fun, and thanks, Miles, for having put all that together. I'm going to go over to my other microphone. So it's now my privilege to make some awards to the people that I feel have made a special contribution to the life of the town. Last June, I read about a concerted effort from several people to resurface the pothole-ridden car park of the community hospital. I thought at the time that I must remember them when I get to make my civic awards, so here they are. And on behalf of a much wider team effort, Ian Regler, Sharon Payne and Stephen Caffin, you'd like to come through. Sorry, Ian?
Thank you very much.
There's your award.
Thank you very much.
And you've got a photo.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to hang on and we'll get a photo of you all three together. Sharon?
Thank you.
There you go. Award. And Stephen? Thank you. You've got a bunch of flowers as well.
Thank you very much.
Quick photo together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next up is Darren Boucher, who I know normally prefers to keep quiet about his generous contributions. Darren is a local businessman, he's made a number of generous donations through his business, providing a solar array to Fair Froom to support them in their new premises. His gift enables Fair Froom to operate their base here with significantly lower electricity consumption costs. He's also donated medical equipment to allow local doctors to deliver services to people who might otherwise not receive it, including the homeless, and he's secured funding for the Froom Fringe Project with a £20,000 donation. In addition to these extremely generous and valuable donations, he offers his time as a mentor to local independent business owners, providing much-needed practical advice. So Darren, would you please come up and accept an award?
Thank you very much.
Flower for you as well, one again.
You don't want me to do that, I've upset a lot of people.
Mention of Fair Froom brings me on to Karen Stewart, who's worked so tirelessly to support Fair Froom and also to support our amazing community radio station, Froom FM. Is Karen with us this evening?
Oh.
Okay. Now, I first met Marjorie Morris with her late husband Bob at one of these town meetings, and they persuaded me to join their work with Froom Festival. What I only found out later is that Marjorie also ran Soda, which became Art for Wellbeing, enabling artists with a wide range of abilities to develop their art within a supportive and creative environment. She recently stepped down after 26 years' service, and I'm told they've had to find three more volunteers to fill the gap. So Marjorie, come up, please, and accept your award. Now, I suggested that Richard Lyons is due for an award, because he's celebrating multiple centenaries this year. Not his own, it's true, but Richard has volunteered for many years at the Memorial Theatre, which marked its centenary last year, and he's also a key member of the Rotary Club of Froom, which is also celebrating their centenary in 2025. So, Richard, thanks for everything you do to make Froom special. Come on up. And last but not by no means least, is a figure familiar to all of us who use the West Way. I had several people suggest that Tim Fielding deserved a Mayor's Civic Award to mark his move on from the West Way, and here's a tribute from Police Inspector Rachel Clark. "Tim worked in the West Way precinct as a security guard, and before that as a doorman in many of the pubs around town spanning over two decades. He's been the eyes and ears for our neighbourhood team, and if you needed to find someone, Tim would be the one to find them. He's a wealth of knowledge and well thought of by everyone in the town, including some of our own well-known offenders, who show him respect regardless of him thwarting their Tim has always supported us. The team have told me that if they were ever in a confrontational situation in the town, Tim would always be there, on standby, not interfering, but stood close by in case they needed assistance, and this was the same for PCs as well as PCSOs. His altruism is second to none, and we'll thoroughly miss him." Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Do feel free to hang around, finish off the food that's in the corner, have a chat with us on the council or anybody else you want to talk to, and get another drink from the bar if you want to. But thank you all very much for coming tonight, and safe travels to Southampton.